I didn't know I was around. Oh, good. I got the okay from you now. Okay, I'll come in. I'll come in. There looks like there could be a road that should be there sometime, but.
Well, I'm sure there's some progress here. We're coming off just a little. Five, ten. We're getting up and off, George.
Yeah. Fun for me, you know, it's like not liking doing it, but man afterwards. Yeah, that was.
Hi, Reagan. Can we see you?
Are we ready? Are we ready?
Yeah.
We're fine. Ready to go. Speaking of the order. We'll have a roll call. George.
Here.
Jean.
Here.
Ed.
Here.
Garrett.
Here.
Roxy. And there's Reagan. Reagan.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Just stand through the pledge.
Well, down here. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone this this meeting is audio recorded. And at this time, do we have any public comments or items not on the agenda? And I'd like to read the consent agenda approval of the following. A city claims to be paid. B Three Forks Rodeo Arena Board Claims to be paid. C Council Minutes of five thirteen twenty twenty five. D Amendment number four to Great West Engineering Service Contract Task Order number four. For the Water Systems Preliminary Engineering Report for fifty three thousand dollars. E Amendment number seven to Great West Engineering Service Contract Task Number nine for the Water System Improvement Project sixty two thousand dollars. F Change Order Number One for CK Architectural Fabrication to build an additional ten feet of handrail for one thousand dollars. G Change Order Number One for Emmering Contracting to add pit run to stabilize the subgrade in street repairs for the water main replacement project for four thousand four hundred and twenty three dollars. H Service Agreement for Kunish Custom Improvements LLC to complete trim, soffit, repair, and paint around the new ADA door at the library for fifteen hundred dollars. I Draw Number One for the Flood Plane Mitigation FEMA Grant for the Jefferson River Mitigation Project for one hundred and ten thousand one hundred and three dollars sixty eight cents. J Service Agreement with Solutions Engineered LLC to provide engineering for the Headwaters Trail System Maintenance Recommendations and Design for twenty twenty five through twenty six for eight thousand dollars. And K Mayor Signature on a Request to Extend the Contract with the Montana Coal Endowment Program, MSEP, to three thirty one of twenty twenty six. Counsel, do you have any questions on the consent? I make a motion of the consent agenda. Second. Just moved in second. We'll have the vote. George.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Garrett.
Yes.
Roxy.
Yes.
And Reagan.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda has been passed. There are no public hearings, so we'll go to report of officers. Crystal?
I attended the municipal summit on last week on the twentieth, and there's quite a bit of legislative update. There will be a PowerPoint that I can hand out because I know you brought something like that last year. She didn't have it ready because there was quite a few bill changes and vetoes at the governor's office. So she's going to update it and get it back on to us. But Senate Bill one seventeen, there's a lot of them that updated the tax way, and then we're going to get our revenues from in the general fund. And so that changes the calculation of the local general fund mills. And then she also talked about me like our voter approved mills. We talk about them as mills, but they could be a value. You could say says thirty mills or whatever is approved, and that's thirty thousand dollars. You might want to say that it's thirty thousand dollars because the inflation rate will attach onto that from now on, where it may be a less amount if you still stick with the mill. So it's something you guys will probably want to consider. Senate Bill five forty two also affects the general funds mills, and Kelly Lynch tried to make a spreadsheet of it, but it's very confusing about some reduction in property taxes, like everybody's getting a four hundred dollar rebate this year and that owns property and your property taxes. So that reduced like anything at three hundred thousand dollars or less so that any of and then there's other increments going up to one percent, but for the one point five million dollar homes and up, they're going to see quite a different rate, like a one point eight nine percent property tax increase. So they just talked about making sure that we get anything that we have. We don't really have any homes like that are worth that much. But any new commercial property, all those kind of permits over to DR every quarter on a timely basis to make sure because they're going to be swamped and stuck behind. We want to make sure that we get those tax revenue for those. House Bill nine twenty four includes a lot, but basically it's a point one percent annual increase for the next twenty years for PERS, and the state chipped in two hundred and fifty million dollars of their surplus money to help stabilize the retirement fund. Senate Bill one three three took away the five percent admin fee that we just talked about putting in with in adopting in the impact fees. So I've changed that for the next meeting, so that's not in there anymore. Senate Bill four oh four requires that building and zoning permits are sent to DR every ninety days. House Bill five oh five is for mobile homeowners, and there's actually a way, like I was thinking of the one here or anybody that owns individual trailers in a in a mobile home park. They could actually apply for money from the state to purchase the land and keep it as it. Like everybody that owns the mobile homes could own the land there too as like a co-op. And then there is historic. I wrote this down, Jean, just because there's a couple of them for the historic preservation that has like twelve million dollars in grants. I didn't know historical reservation society would want to do anything. It's House Bill twelve and House Bill seven fifty six. Then there's a bathroom bill that they were making sure, like the library was pretty worried about it because we only have one stall in each of them, and you have to make them both like gender controlled or have locking doors if you only had one bathroom for that had both men and women could go into, but shouldn't have to worry about that right now because somebody sued. So that's an injunction for right now, so we don't want to hear that at this time. I think the big takeaways were, they said, like, recommend it. When I was one, and I don't remember where she was from, maybe maybe Helena or something, but she's said to the communities like Three Forks or anybody in their district, we should invite them to our meetings more often because they really don't know about what's going on in their areas until, Megan, can you just start it up? Sorry. Until they they're getting regarded during the legislative time. They don't hear anything. So I thought we could reach out to Senate District thirty five and House District sixty nine, maybe in the off season and having time for meetings, talk about Jefferson River project or whatever else is going on, maybe ABU stuff. I don't know. And then MNI talks like the whole afternoon about liability, and lots of cities and towns have left MNIAs work comp program and went to Montana State Fund, which Montana State Fund sounds like they're undercutting everybody from MNI, but Alan was saying he knows, like, let's say it was Three Forks, and we had a lot of claims and also twenty dollars to ensure each person that they're saying, well, we can do it for fifteen. He knows eventually they're going to have to come back because they they cost twenty or twenty five dollars per person because of all their accidents they have. We don't have any, just so you know. But that was something that they were kind of worried about, that they because we're self self funded and pooled all with the other cities, it might increase our work comp rates because there's a smaller pool of all the communities. He MMA has filed suit against Montana State Fund on that, oh, two. And then he also talked about liabilities, and the biggest one is slips and trips. And it's not just like you slipping and tripping as employees. It's slips and trips on the sidewalk, hitting things, rolling your ankle in a pothole and things like that that cities and towns sue over. So he was just recommending everybody being cognizant of like if their public works are driving around or if we have a tree maintenance, if we're bigger like Bozeman, we had a tree department that went and trims trees, and while they're at that property, if they see a trip hazard, you know, having a policy that you painted at that time, you get it to the street department to make sure they fix it within such and such months or something like that. So I do think we'll probably resurrect a streets and alleys committee meeting at some point to talk about that in more detail and see like what our policy is because we don't have much in ordinance. We do have the one about replacing sidewalks, but we've done all inventory that we can possibly do. So I don't know if we want to start over and keep doing it, things like that. And then he also recommended holding account, holding employees accountable accountable. Like if they are working in a trench and they don't have a trench box, writing them up for that, or if they're not having, wearing their seatbelts, writing them up for that so that we're always being consistent with everybody in the event something happens. And then he also said the last thing is takeaways to look at all of our parks because any of those areas where you get off the bottom of the slide and it's like rutted out, and there's no more gravel or sand or whatever is in there. That's actually the part where people slip and trip or fall and hurt themselves quite a bit too. And so of course, they're recommending that rubberized material if we do any upgrades, but you could also just fill it in with sand too, just to make sure there's some sort of cushion when they fall. Was just one of his recommendations. I tried to do that real quick. Sorry. I can tell you more later. She had a really good PowerPoint. When it's updated, I'll just keep it up to you.
Thank you, Crystal. Okay, are there any reports from council committees? unfinished business, I guess. Pardon me. At our next meeting, I guess Kelly will give us a report on her trip to New Orleans.
Wally and I watched them, like they did these times, and we watched them present, and they did a really good job, but I'm sure she'll do. She'll do it in more detail about it.
That's awesome. And Susan, are you on board? Well, there you are. We need a water project update.
Okay. Well, first I'll give you an update on the distribution project that's replacing the water lines over in the middle of town there on second, third, and fourth, and then extending from Elm all the way up to Neil, up by the school. They are about halfway done with what was the base bid, which was the area to the south from Cedar and South. The water line replacement is going very smoothly. They're passing their back tea tests as well as their pressure tests as they go along, and they've got a good system in place. And I think they've worked out some of the kinks with communication with Bob and Steve to make sure everything is smooth there in terms of when they need to shut off water. I think they've done a good job notifying the public and staying on top of things. Crystal can correct me if I'm wrong there. But overall, I think that portion of it is going quite smoothly. Where we're running into some more challenges, I would say, is related to the street repair that comes after the water line replacement. I've had the geotechnical engineer come out and take a look at the subgrade. We've talked about the subgrade lots and lots of the construction meetings that we have every week. But basically, it comes down to there's unfortunately some some material that is very unstable underneath the pavement. And it's making it difficult to pave after they do the water line replacement because the subgrade material is quite weak. There's a lot of clay that we've encountered. It does change quite quickly. Elm Street was great. The paving patching that went there was fine. We didn't have to do anything special. Second Avenue was a different story, and Cedar is also turning out to be rather challenging. So I've worked with Emmering to get costs for what it takes to stabilize the subgrade based on the geotechnical engineers recommendations. That went pretty well on the first block of Second Avenue that they did. We're running into some additional issues just with that, the pavement issues spreading beyond the trench and the patch. And for those of you on the Water and Sewer Committee, we'll talk more about that on Friday and how we're addressing it. I do have a report from the geotechnical engineer that I'll provide to you as well. But in that change order, that was part of the consent agenda. There was a cost for pit run to stabilize the first intersection where we ran into issues. And then there were unit prices for installing fabric grid and additional three inch minus to stabilize that trench so that the equipment can be on there to pave back at the end. So I don't have a those unit prices will be utilized to pay Emmering out of the contingency for what they needed, they have needed to do in order to perform the paving patching. And again, this is just due to the clay type material that is there. The Geotech was relatively surprised. We did geotechnical as part of the design, but the bore holes that we did didn't capture this particular clay type soil that we're running into. So that's why we're entering into utilizing some of the contingency funds. But I think everybody is working well together. We're communicating well. And I mean, we're figuring out a path forward for it, and we'll talk more about a couple of the other options the contractor has suggested on on Friday at the Water Sewer Committee meeting, which of course will then get passed along to the rest of you at the next council meeting. But overall, things are going well. We are going to be able to expend all of that ARPA money before the end of twenty five, which was the intent. And I don't think I have anything, any anything else on that particular project, but if any of you have any questions on how they're doing, what the process is, anything like that, I'm happy to answer them. I must give you guys really great information. You never have any questions afterward. Either that or it's really boring. I don't know.
Okay. Do you think, like the street we were on today on Second Avenue between Date and Cedar, do you think that we might have to repave that whole street or because of the alligatoring and everything else that's going on? Or you can discuss this with the water, with the Water Sewer Committee, I guess. I was pretty concerned about all this.
Yeah, we will discuss that, and that's one area where we told them not to pave the the patch yet, which is nine to ten feet wide, you know, where the the trench was because of the additional damage that has occurred on the pavement adjacent to that where we're not doing any subgrade replacement. If you watch a truck roll over that, you you can see it go like this, which means that there is unstable material underneath the pavement versus where they've done the stabilization and they've put in the three inch minus and the grid. It stays nice and flat when a truck goes over it and when the paving equipment goes over it. We are encouraging them repeatedly and asking them to please stay within the trench width with their heavier equipment. But of course, they they have to go around sometimes in order to dump. And not knowing that the subgrade was that bad in all of these areas, we didn't put any weight restrictions on the contractor for doing this work on these side streets. And I mean, if we had, they would have, we would have required people to use smaller equipment and bid prices would have been higher. So I mean, it's a it's a give and take there on what we, if we had known something versus not, right? But I asked them not to pave that street because I want to get a better idea of where we're going to run into these subgrade issues on the rest of the project so that we know what funding we have available. I mean, I know how much money we have in contingency, but how far is that going to go? And what are the areas that need attention the most? If if the material clears up and it's more like it is on Elm and we have more contingency left, then we'll talk about this on Friday in more detail, but I think it would be worthwhile to assess paving a wider width, whether it's the full street for that block or, you know, for a hundred feet where it's the worst, it's the worst at the intersection itself or what the approach is. It's a little difficult. I mean, for the trench width itself, I'm, as we run into unstable material, I'm asking them to replace it, utilizing contingency funds. That's what the change order is for, so that they can at least pave the patch width. I mean, we need that part repaired, so at least traffic can be on the road, and that's what's part of the contract. When we get outside of that, then it gets a little harder to assess until they're further along in the project and we know what funding is remaining in contingency to let us know how much of that we can address. So we're working through getting some additional pricing for some additional options using some soils soil stabilization chemicals versus just utilizing pit run. And just kind of seeing how it goes. I'm I'm hoping that as they get further north, it matches better with what was in the original Geotech report, and we get into more gravels and less of this. I mean, this is really, really clay type material that just the equipment kind of bounces as it compact because that's just what clay does. And you can't, you can't pave on top of that. I mean, you could, but it's going to fail. And, you know, we don't want that. Obviously, this project costs a lot of money. We want the pavement patch to hold up for as long as possible when they're done. But in terms of how much of that we can address, the alligatoring out on the sides. Well, we just, we need to have a better feel for how many linear feet, how many square yards we're going to need to do before we can say that. So.
Okay.
I don't know if I have a question, but.
Well, yeah, because I know the materials all different up and down the streets, but this has nothing to do with the project, but do you think it would be wise maybe next year to chip seal these the streets where we have patched?
I do. I think so. You know, as long as we're getting good, stable pavement underneath in some of the areas, you know, like at that particular intersection where you came and talked to us today, Randy, that's pretty, pretty soft there, and your chip seal isn't going to hold up very well if we don't do something to repair that. But I think chip sealing over the good, stable patch where like they have on Elm and that first block of second between Elm and Date, I I don't think that that's a bad idea at all. I think it will prevent infiltration of water, you know, in the crack between the patch and the old stuff, so I don't see anything wrong with doing that. But in terms of the the full street width in areas where depending on what we're able to accomplish with the contingency available, I would say I still have some questions about whether or not that would be beneficial.
We'll see what happens.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Susan, I think one of the things you're running up against is that that street from Elm to Date and that area around there was paved in nineteen sixty eight or sixty seven. And and the background behind that is that Peter Hewitt was doing the interstate out here between the two interchanges, between this interchange and the town pump interchange. And they overcrushed gravel and plant mix. And so they made a deal to the city of Three Forks that they would come in and do some paving. And basically, they came in, graded the streets and paved. There was no digging down a foot or two and putting good gravel in. It was just what was there. And so then on some of these other streets where you're saying you're finding good gravel, if you go to the nineteen eighty nine, no, excuse me, nineteen seventy nine, nineteen eighty, eighty one, where we done a big street paving project, that was done differently, where it was actually engineered and whatever. So I think you're going to find that in some of those areas. If you were to drop down another block on first, you would really find it on there too. But you're not going on first, which you're lucky, but but it was just an area that was chosen. The town didn't wasn't, didn't want to go for Hewitt to pave the whole works. And so the city fathers chose areas that were around the churches and the downtown, the fire department and stuff to where it looked, didn't look like they were favoring a certain individual, but they were trying to do it to benefit the town like with the churches and stuff. And so it was a good project. I have to admit it, it stood up pretty well for what it really has done and and stuff. And I mean, that's I know it's over fifty years old because they don't, I was still in high school. I've been out of high school for a long time. It's getting close to fifty five years old. And it hasn't had any major work done to it except for changing. So that's pretty.
It is, you know, I mean, for the light traffic that is normally on the road, it it's held up just fine, you know, I mean, whenever it it just becomes a problem anytime you have to dig it up, right? I mean, Steve talked about that some, and I'm sure Randy ran into it, and then trying to patch back because you're you're dealing with that softer subgrade and everything. And and now with this, just with the size of equipment that's happening there, it it's hard on it, right? So, yeah, I'm, that's good information. That makes me feel like like I, you know, I'm a little more aware of what we're going to run into, I guess, that still makes me I don't, I don't love doing large change orders, you know, still kind of at the at the beginning of the project, you know, and and we've done a fair bit of three inch minus here to to get through Second Avenue and and now figuring out exactly what we're going to do on Cedar. But like I said, I mean, that's why we have a ten percent contingency. We require that. This funding agencies require it when we award a project, and it's exactly for things like this. And I just want to, I want to be able to find the best way to put that money forward to stabilize as much as possible and not have it be too piecemeal together, you know, and have it hold up for the Public Works Department so that they're not having to deal with it, you know, in two or three years from now because it's falling apart. And I think the section, I can see the section replacement that they're doing is it's holding up great. It's that off the sides of that, whether or not that's going to continue to hold up well. And so we'll see when they turn the corner. They're gonna, they'll be done with Cedar here this week. They they need to stabilize that. It was sloughing in on the sides of the trench box. They moved the trench box. They moved the trench, excavated, moved the trench box forward, and then on either side of the trench box, the pavement and the soil, I mean, it just collapsed down next to it without any equipment on it or anything. So that gives you a pretty good indication of how unstable the material is underneath. But it could change as they turn and head back towards Elm again. They saw it change really quickly. Like I said, when they came off of Elm and headed up second, so we'll just see how it goes. And I'll just keep you informed of where we're at and keep trying to work with them and get with Steve all the time and make sure we're hitting the area, utilizing the city's money the best we can to to make it successful. So. Anything else on distribution? Okay, then I'll give you a quick update on water supply. The O'Keefe has been out. They drilled well thirteen, which is just to the south along Kid Road, south of well twelve. And it's just an estimate thus far because they haven't been able to do the pump test yet. But they're estimating at least a hundred and fifty gallons a minute out of that next well. You'll recall well twelve, it's being designed for two hundred gallons a minute. So this is excellent news as long as the water quality comes back where we expect it to. I don't expect it to be any different from well twelve because it's so close. But once we get that information back and then they need to install this, they're getting the Civ Analysis done to size the screens to install in the well. Once they do that, they'll pump test it. Once those two things are complete, we'll know for certain what rate it can be pumped at and whether or not the water quality is acceptable. But we're headed down the right path there, and with that yield up from that well of over a hundred gallons a minute, this puts the city in a position of being able to meet demands for the twenty year planning period for the high growth. So not just for what we had estimated in the PER a few years ago, but what the process that Lee and Randy have gone through with your growth policy and looking at all of the areas that could be developed around Three Forks. This volume of water will put you in a position to serve that high growth rate, should it occur. And so the next steps here are just to get these wells connected to the distribution system. The one contract amendment that was on the consent agenda was to complete the design for wells thirteen and eleven along with well twelve to connect them all to the distribution system. So we've got the plan set nearly complete, and I need to finish the design report, and then that's going to DEQ. And we have a plan for. Um, and we have a plan for trying to execute all of those pieces. This is MSEP money for the most part that needs to be spent on the water supply project. It also needs to be utilized by the end of the year and I think this is. This is coming together so that we can make that happen. O'Keefe is gonna do a chunk of it as a change order to the project. Um, to install the pumps and the pitless adapters at each of the wells. Steve has a plan for the city to perform some of the work, um, and MSEP dollars can pay for the materials for that. And then for the wellhouse, we will likely need to bid that out. Um, but that's just one, one piece of the the many things that are going to have to happen, so. It's gonna be a bit of a, bit of a crunch here this summer and into the fall to get it done. Um, but I think you guys are in a good position to then. Be done with the water supply project for now, for for hopefully for a very long time.
Susan, at at one of our meetings, you said that uh with the additional water that we're gonna get, we should be able to go clear into twenty forty. The year twenty-four. So I I didn't know if some, a lot of the council didn't know that or not, but. That would be kind of nice.
Yeah.
Gene, Gene will still be here.
That was the growth policy was supposed to move that twenty years forward for twenty years, so that's.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Susan? Oh, okay, Susan.
Okay, thank you very much. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Now we'll start on our new business and it's a consideration and decision on Sarah Ralston Jorgensen application for additional. Dog permit located at one oh five East Adam Street. And I'd like to read just part of the the public hearing to catch the council up on that. It was an application. Uh, and the city received an application on four twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five from Sarah. John and Sarah Jorgensen living at one oh five East Adam Street, Three Forks, to obtain an additional. Uh, dog permit. The applicants have, it says four dogs, but we have five, right?
Yes.
And two of which are owned by the Jorgensons or you have three?
We have three and my dad has two.
Okay, and two uh owned by the property owner, Carol Ralston. The age of the dog was not provided in the application, but the applicant state that when the oldest dog passes away. They would be in compliance with total number of three, three dogs and not replace a fourth. An inspection will be conducted by code enforcement, which it has been. And uh, Galen County Sheriff, it's how I agreed to record it a little bit. Let's read uh read ordinance number six dash four eight. The law states. That three dogs are allowed on on any one property which must be registered and licensed with the city. If one chooses to house more than three dogs, one must apply for a proper permit. The maximum number of dogs is four. So with all that being said, I'm going to turn to uh Sarah's letter that she wrote to the wrote to the city. And it's our application for that. And to the city, uh, from from Sarah Jorgensen to the city, I first want to apologize for breaking the law when my husband and I had. To had to move in with my dad. We combined dogs as well as that. Put us over the number of dogs allowed by the city. My biggest fear was having to rehome a dog or put one down. So I did not register my dogs. I am now asking the city to allow me to have a kennel license until my oldest dog. Uh, passes away and we are back at uh the number of uh of the, well, you'll be back at four dogs.
Yeah, we'll be down to four instead of out of compliance with five.
Okay. We are not running a breeding facility or kennel. Our dogs are part of the family in which we treat them as such. Our dogs have a dog door for indoor-outdoor access. We have fresh water both side, both inside and out. That is changed and filled every day. They are fed a good dry food with uh with an added raw diet. One of my dogs has really bad food allergies and and uh is fed. A full raw diet and the dog poop is picked up roughly three times a week or more. We make sure that they have a vet whenever needed and we keep them up to date. With their vaccination. As part of our family, the dogs go on vacation, hiking, camping, and just trips to the store with us. We try very hard to make sure they are kept rich. We do. Use bark collars for the dogs when they are left home alone. However, they are not. They are only home alone for a few hours a day. My dad works a few hours a day at the golf course and then is home. And I work forty-eight hours on and ninety-six off and except. Uh, going to for groceries and and home. We will continue to be good neighbors and keep our dogs from becoming a nuisance. We appreciate the consideration of the city. Now I'd like to read to you, uh, Wally and Officer Greed honest went over. And says Three Fork City Council on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, I. Uh, Austin Greed honest, badge number six nine four. Animal Control Officer with the Galway County Sheriff's Office, along with Wally Sigler. Three Forks Code Enforcement Officer went to the residence of one oh five. West Adam Street to inspect the residence of John and Sarah Jorgensen regarding their application for a Three Forks kennel license. For their five dogs. As we made our way to the residence, I turned a fully fenced yard where the fence is mostly over six feet tall. With a at least two gates. I observed that the yard had lots of room for the individual dogs to move freely. The yard did not have excessive amount of dog feces and there was no smell indicating that the dogs lived in a hazardous environment. When we met with Jorgensen, she brought each of the dogs out to meet us one at a time. There are five dogs in total. The first one we met was Cash, a three and a half year old Doberman medium sized. Dog who was well mannered and friendly. Loki is a white-bolt terrier. Who is a lap lover, protector at first sight and who is allergic to different. Stuff and requires a special diet. Odin is particularly uh partially brown and tan. We did not meet him as he was with her husband uh truck driving. Harold, uh, Sarah's dad has two dogs. Mutt is is older mutt with uh who is blind and deaf. But friendly and buddy is a black and protective dog of the household. Jorgensen states that each of the dogs has a kind of a special diet but is fed daily. The dogs have access to water avail- available for the dogs as they wish to drink. All the dogs appear to be normal and healthy at the current time. They were well cared for and and uh. Partially friendle- uh friendly while controlling. Dogs had plenty of room to move free freely around the house. They had their own separate space and got along very well with each other. The house appeared clean with no amounts of dog feet feces or urine areas and again, there was no smell indicating that the dogs lived in a hazardous environment. Jorgensen's live in the middle of every block and there has been zero complaints on the on record about barking. Dogs from any of the neighbors as there are several dogs on that block. I have discussed with Jorgensen, the Galway County Dog Ordinances, and she is now updated. On the city, Three Fork City Rules. Jorgensen made it clear that she would always keep her dogs under control because she did not want. Any complaints from her neighbors and it showed she cares for the dogs. I discussed with Jorgensen the barking dog box machines as well. And Jorgensen stated, there are records that all the dogs are current with their rabies vaccination. I at this current time. Do not see a reason to deny the Jorgensen's request for a Three Forks kennel license. George, Jorgensen has previously stated and apologized for not completing. Pleading the kennel license sooner out of fear of having to separate from one of the dogs to get to the uh. To set the city limits, as with life circumstances that put them all. Uh, put them over the set limit. Jorgensen is a very responsible proactive dog owner who will work. To head off any potential problems before they arise or when. Or if they are made aware of an issue. If the council has any further questions, please feel free to con- contact me, Animal Control Officer. Austin Greed honest, badge number six nine four, Galway County Sheriff's Office. So at this time, uh. Does the staff have anything to ask Sarah?
I don't have anything to ask Sarah, but I do have a comment. Uh, we've been down this road before and we've pretty much had these same promises made. And not followed or kept and it pretty much tore our neighborhood in half. I'd like to avoid that again if we could.
Thank you, George.
Conditional use would be. Uh, complaints of dog barking to start with. And a more immediate action than we had last time. Cause that went on for six weeks.
Yeah, at least.
Here, um, I have a question. How old is the oldest dog?
We honestly don't know how old Mutt is. Um. Before I moved in with my, my husband and I moved in with my dad, uh, my aunt had come to live with him and ended up with terminal cancer. And he inherited this dog. We have no idea how old he is. Um. He is very old though. He has no teeth left. He has gone blind. He has gone deaf.
You guys have him for quite some time?
Uh, my dad's had him for. Man, he's been gone about four years, four years now. Um, but Odin and Cash that Austin talked about are my youngest. Uh, Odin is six, Cash is three and a half. Everybody else is over ten years old at this point in time.
I'd like to see George do in Greed uh Officer Greed honest's report. On about the fifth paragraph down, it says there has been zero complaints on record about barking dogs from the neighbors. Now, how long have you had the dogs over there?
So we've lived with my dad since June. We've been there almost a year.
So like last June?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's been a year without complaints.
But just just to add to what George said. When we okayed the situation over on First Avenue, there was no complaints. Everybody there was gonna be a bark collars. There was gonna be no barking. And it turned into a, a real disaster. I mean, an older lady. Uh, I'm sure the person that had the dogs wasn't happy when we got through, but. Uh, I think that that's the thing that George is trying to say and I think that we should. Take notice of is that. If something just hold on, if we start getting complaints, if there is dog barking, we need to do something about that way. I didn't think that the Animal Control Officer handled it very well at all the last time.
No.
He kept coming back and saying there was no problem, no problem. So. I think that uh I'm not opposed to uh giving him a kennel license, but I just wanna make sure that it doesn't get out of hand.
And Crystal, how would we do that? Amend amend the license or, you know?
How would we do what?
Okay, that's uh just what Jean said. If they approve the kennel license tonight. And if it gets out of hand.
I I know Susan, but I think you guys have to have really good findings as to why you. You changed an ordinance last year that said four was the max and no offense, Sarah, but four was the max. She has five. You are going to go, if you approve this, you are going against your own ordinance. So I think you have to find some really good conditions, findings as to why you're allowing it, like, and put those on the record. And like you said, have some some conditions, but I don't know. I don't, I don't see that you can have five. The law says the max is four.
Says to maintain maintain more than four dogs of any age with or without an issued permit.
But in the, it says the max is four. You can have three and if you want four, you have to have an additional dog.
Yeah, I just, just saying again, it says with or without an issued permit. It says. Like max is four. With or without.
Oh.
That last line. Yeah.
Any other questions? Sure, sure. Would you like to?
I, the only thing I have to say is that. When we decided to move in with my dad, the max of four was not applied yet. So we didn't, we knew we were combining to have more than the three and would need a kennel license. But there wasn't a max limit at that time. But I moved in with my dad because he's older. And he needed help with finances and food and bills. And if. I had thought that it was going to change when we had made that decision, I might not have moved in and I would have just continued to pay his bills. And buy his groceries while living on our own, but I I do understand that you guys made an ordinance. And we're not in compliance with that, but I'm asking to not have to put a dog down prior to them. Being ready to.
I guess after the experience we had be previously, uh, that was pretty nasty deal there in the end, and uh. So, uh.
I I do have a question. Does it make a difference that one dog doesn't live on the premises except for a day and a half a week? The one that's with my husband trucking, he's gone Sunday afternoon through Friday evening and he's not on the premises all week long.
That's a good question. Yeah, it's like, actually, the rules pretty much cut and dry.
I think that's something you guys should just start in her. I think that is something that's a good point to consider because if you do not live in town, but you work in town. You bring your dog here. Let's say I bring, I live in Elk Ridge, but I come here every day and bring my dog and that's allowed. That dog does not have to be licensed in town.
How often is the dog, uh, the the one that's traveling out of town? Yeah, you just mentioned it. I just didn't write it down.
That's okay. He comes home Friday evening and Sunday afternoon. Yep.
A couple days.
My, sorry, things coming to me. I'm still kind of tired. If you guys don't grant this exception. The rule is a kennel license for four dogs. So I put a dog down. I'm at four. Do I have to go through this entire process again? To get granted. A kennel license for my four dogs or? Do you deny the fifth dog? He has to be put down, but I can get a kennel license for my four.
Uh, as far as I know, uh, having the four dogs and a kennel license would be in compliance with all the ordinances.
Yes, but do I have to go through this process once I put, I'd have to put the fifth dog down? Would I have to go through this process again? After that, or is there something that the four would be approved?
I see an issue with this process today for four dogs. Yeah, that that way, that would, it's 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 a. Getting along with our ordinance for dogs. You're and you're you're here to apply for the extra dog. I don't see that you have to come back and do that again.
Okay.
The reason why we we don't have a precise answer is none of us are lawyers and so we're trying to thread that needle and give you the best accurate information as we possibly can. Cause the worst thing we'd like to do is give you inaccurate information. We we really want this to be is. I mean, this is not fun, but we do want it to be as fair as possible.
And I think you're right.
So what I understand. So what I understand from the council tonight, if she has four dogs, she's approved.
Yes, that my, that's my.
From George, yes. So, uh. Uh, Sarah, do you have anything else to say?
No, we, we never did decide on whether or not a dog being there for two days on the weekend makes a difference in this process, but.
That is the question. It's there on the weekend.
It's more than four dogs. It's more than four dogs.
Okay. Well, counsel?
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion, um, so you can vote here. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the dog permit. Um, for the Jordanson family for, uh, four dogs.
I would like to modify that motion. That to be put a conditional use per, uh, conditional use on it, that if we get. A, a half a dozen dog com- barking complaints, that we get to remove the additional dog.
Do you put that condition on everybody that applies for the four? I don't need to be.
You have to let them have their motion and have a second.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
And you're the first one, so it's not anybody else.
There's no second.
Do I have a second on this?
I'll second it.
Yeah, so it's been moved to second is with George, George's amendment. That, uh. We'll approve four dogs, but say that again, George.
That, that we have a, a limit of six. Barking dog complaints. From these folks, that we remove the extra dog. The extra dog has to go, we have to go back to three dogs. And since they haven't had any complaints so far.
It's been, yeah, it's been a year that they haven't had it.
I think that's an okay condition.
Sarah?
I was just wondering if that was a condition that was put on everybody that applied for a kennel license, but he said, this is the first one. But since the ordinance changed, do I get to decide the dog or, or, I mean?
A clarifying question.
Yes.
So if we approve this motion, this permit for four dogs, are we basically telling her she has to put a dog down?
Or rehome it? I, nobody is gonna re. I have three dogs over the age of ten years old and they, nobody's gonna take. An older dog. We see that in the shelters all the time. Um, my two younger dogs were both rescued out of the shelter and. To be honest, I would rather see them put down than go back into a shelter and wonder why. Sorry, it's been a really long couple of weeks, why I gave up on them. Um, then abandoned them in a shelter. And rehoming dogs, you put a dog on Facebook and the chance that that dog goes to a. Bait dog for a fight club is in the nineties and that's just not acceptable either. So, go, go. Um, it, it, to me, I, I would end up having to put one of my older dogs down to comply with the city. I'm not sure Reagan, I think, to.
Reagan, do you have anything to say?
I mean, I just don't think that's right.
I agree.
Can I say something as code enforcement officer? Here we have a customer that's trying to do the right thing. Volun- she's trying to voluntarily be in compliance. And you're seriously gonna ask her to put a healthy dog down? Doesn't make any sense to me. Why wouldn't we give someone a chance to do the right thing? We put conditions, strict conditions like George said, if we get so many complaints. This comes back to city council to be re- reevaluated. How in the world could you guys ask someone to put a dog?
I don't wanna reevaluate this for six or eight weeks like we did last time.
First of all, Stacy moved in with six dogs. She didn't ask anybody. She barely lived there. There were a hundred complaints within the first couple of weeks. This is a totally different situation. There's been no com- no complaints for almost a year. She's trying to do the right thing. That other thing you're referring to, she couldn't care less doing the right thing. You just can't imagine asking someone to put a healthy dog down. It, it just doesn't make any sense to me. When we have someone trying to do the right thing, paying the fees to get licensed and kennel license.
Do, does our ordinance? Consider that ever? It says four dogs, period. Four dogs, period. Right, we have a situation which has been here in the whole order.
There's not gonna be an end to it. There's gonna be somebody else down the line. Hey, you made this for these guys. And, and I do feel bad. I mean, I have a dog. Go.
No, Garrett had a hand up first.
Um, so as of right now, there is, there is a motion and a second for an approval of four dogs. Um, and we're just in the discussion phase right now?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So at this point, it would be either a yes or no vote on. The condition for four dogs with the amendments that, uh, George has put forward. Um, if that is voted yes or no, um, are we able to make a second motion? To have a second vote with a different set of amendments? Either people can vote yes or no to either of that set group.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood the kind of process of working.
A motion is made up and it, and it can, the motion, any motion can be made.
Yep.
Preferably in the form of a positive, so then it gets second and you discuss it. Then you guys decide how to vote. You could all vote no against the motion and that one dies, then you bring up a new motion. And something like that. We did have another, this was before there was a limit of six, but there was another applicant a long time ago that had. I wanna say six Chihuahuas and a cocker spaniel, so seven dogs. Um, and there was a condition that as each one passed, they got it down to a maximum four. And that was before we even had a number of maximum. So there was that as an option and a condition to previous councils do.
Um, so at that, at this point, I think I'd like to call the vote on this ordinance. Uh, with the amendment that George offered.
Which is just about.
Which is the four dogs and with the six complaints, the. Kennel license, the additional dog permit is removed. I, I would like there to be a vote on that.
Okay. Let's have voted. George?
I vote for, uh, I vote for all the city ordinance.
Vote yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Jean?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
No.
Roxy?
No.
Reagan?
I'm sorry, but if I vote no, what, like, does that mean?
Then the mayor, the mayor is the tiebreaker.
Right, but I'm just saying, uh, if I'm voting no, does that mean I don't want them to be approved even if they only had four dogs or?
No, you can make a new motion after this, if this one dies.
And that's what I was, that's what I was going to do Reagan. I was going to make a new motion after this vote was had.
Okay, well, then no.
I had done this before last, I think it was last fall on a particular case. Over on, uh, between sixth and seventh. And, uh, I vote no. The reason why I voted no, will vote no is because for one year, they have not had any complaints. And like Wally stated on Second Avenue, when Stacy moved in, when that person moved in there. It was just turmoil every day, but there hasn't been anything here. And the reason why I'm voting no too is because the dogs are ten. They're, you know, they're not gonna last that much longer. So I vote no. So I'll bring it up again.
Um, I would like to make an emotion to, uh, approve the. Conditional dog permit for the dogs that are currently living at the Jordanson house. With the amendment that if six complaints are brought to us, their kennel license is removed. Uh, with the understanding that as dogs leave your family, they are not going to be replaced. To become in compliance with our code as quickly as humanly possible. That's my motion.
I say that.
It's been moved to second. Sarah, do you have anything to add to that? No, that's good. Okay, we'll have the vote on that. Uh. What Garrett just brought up. George?
No.
Jean?
No.
Ed?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Yes. Garrett?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
And Reagan?
Yes.
Motion's been passed.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
And thanks for your patience and this is not, I, I don't think anyone in here had an easy time with that. Uh, I know I did. And I really, really hope it doesn't bite us in the butt.
I am gonna work very hard not to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Okay, our next item.
I'm here for Sawdust and Steel. Have a seat.
That'll be.
That's okay.
Okay, our next item will be approved, approval of a person, personnel, uh, policy updates.
Can we jump to her instead of the other ones?
Okay. Uh, the next item will be determination of use requested by Sawdust and Steel Brewery located in the Central Business District. To hold an outdoor events in the parking lot. I would like to read, uh, the letters. Okay. Sawdust and Steel Brewery respectfully request a determination from the planning department concerning that our proposed live. From the lot event aligns with permitted uses under current zoning regulations for Central Business District CBD. As a, as an existing licensed bar and cocktail lounge classified similarly to a restaurant or cafe. We operate with, within the allowable uses for this district. The request pertains to, uh, hosting an outdoor live event on our parking lot. Adjacent to our brewery, uh, premises at one twenty-three West Elm, Three Forks, Montana. This free all ages community event is titled Live From The Lot. And is intended to support local musicians, food vendors, residents by offering a family friendly evening of music, food and connection. The event will feature live music at a bought volume comparable to other live music regularly hosted at establishments within Three Forks city limits. Mobile food vendors, outdoor seating and yard games. Music will conclude by eight thirty PM and all events activities will end no later than nine PM. We anticipate the attendance ranging from fifty to one hundred and fifty people. All activities will remain within our privately owned property. We will maintain full compliance with compatible, uh, noise ordinances. Food service and alcohol licensing, licensing requirements, including our catering endorsement. And public health and safety protocols on onsite staff to manage parking, restroom access and event safety. Additional offspring parking is available at our auxiliary lot across from the Three Forks rodeo grounds to accommodate overflow. We are seeking a determination to host this event on Friday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. With the option to host up to, uh, two additional events of a similar nature during the summer season. We view these events as a positive contribution to the cultural life of Three Forks. And an opportunity to bring the community together in safe, well managed, managed setting. Now, uh, we did, uh, I'd like to update you on what Susan said too. She wrote us a letter. This is a temporary event described as a parking lot concert with live music. Including, uh, mobile food vendor, outdoor seating and family friendly yard games is allowed under the C B D. As a conditional use, a compatible use with conditions to mitigate impacts. As amusements and recreational activities defined in, uh, section eleven dash eight A dash three. This appears to be a one-time occurrence based on the use of word event and not plural. The city will need to know the date of this, uh, event prior to approval. Uh, if this event is during the rodeo, the impacts could be different, especially for offsite parking. The applicant provided hours of operation for the event as well as music. These hours appear to be reasonable mitigation, recognizing the existing regulations for the impact of sound on the neighbors. Thus, a condition should be imposed to limit the hours of the event from five PM to nine PM with music from five thirty to eight thirty. As for volume, the council should inform the applicant if the volume is too loud. There may be a request during the event to, for the volume to be reduced. As suggested by the applicant, the council should impose a requirement that onsite staff of the applicant manage parking and traffic flow. This is a great start for such events in the application for one event. Will give all involved more insight into the issues that could arise and be further, uh, mitigation in the future. If another event is sought. And, uh, this is written by Susan B. Swinley, our attorney. So at this time, counsel, uh. Uh, I would like to ask Megan if she would like to say anything?
Um, all pretty well stated there in the letter that you read out loud. Thank you. Um. Not too many more additional details. Um, we can only stay open till nine PM. I have to have, legally, we're used to this. Um, having everybody gone and now by nine PM, usually eight forty-five, we start some everybody to leave. Um, on the lighter days, the days that end lighter. Um, so yeah, we plan on having it all wrapped up. Music ending about eight thirty and then cleared out by nine. Uh, we'll have additional porta potties on site just to make it easy for everybody, um, that got dropped off the night before. Um, and then this additional parking lot says our parking lot will be utilized for the event. And then we have a temporary fence that goes around the property that was approved by the state last year. Um, I was like. I'm, I'm a little unfamiliar with it, but it, it zones in to where like alcohol can't leave this, these bounds. Um, so it can leave like the top room and the patio, which was originally approved and go into the parking lot. As long as this, there's some temporary fences put up and we do have that, um, ready to go and we used it last year. But we didn't actually end up having to move for it last year. Um, and then, so we have this additional parking lot, right? Across some rodeo grounds that the owner of the brewery owns that lot as well. Um, so if we do need it, we can send some traffic out that way. Um, our first event is this first. Um, like a lot event scheduled for, it's like three, three Fridays from now and, I'm sorry.
Sixteen, I think it's.
Uh, yeah, six thirteen, actually, a Friday. Mm-hmm. And, uh, then I'm, I don't plan on doing another one in July. But I, upon approval, might consider one at the end of summer, um, like end of August, early September, something like that. Just so it's not so hot. Um, and again, kind of like kicking off summer, ending summer. We have the shows up the hill, um, at our friendly neighbors up there at Breeder Brewery, which are super fun. I love going to. Um, but this is a way more down scaled than that. Um, we have the Rocky Mountain Crows are playing for us. It'll be a lot of fun and they're well known here, so. So just kind of more of a hometown feeling, trying to bring more of the community out. Um, eventually, I don't mean eventually, but one of the ideas is to bring in like some type of community effort as well and get other people involved in it as we get this under our belt. Yeah. So, yeah, that's kind of the.
Questions? Jean?
I, I guess that there must be, uh, maybe I'm missing this, but if you read Susan's letter, she replies to an event that is gonna happen one time. And then if this event works well, or if it doesn't work well, and then we can go off of it. Now, you're saying that you would like to have three or four maybe during the summer. So I guess that, what are we approving it for? The first event in June?
No, you're asked, she's asking if this, what she's planning on doing falls under permitted uses in central business. So Susan read it as an event and a concert, and that's a conditional use. This wasn't applied for as a conditional use, even though it's written on a conditional use permit. That's the same form we use when the dispensary came into town and said, I'm kind of like a dry cleaner and I'm kind of like a bakery because we do a little of this with chemicals and we do a little of this with manufacturing. And you don't list dispensaries anywhere in central business, so my business is kind of like X, Y, and Z that are listed. Do you agree? And so that's what we asked Megan because she came in to say, is this allowed? And we're like, it's not listed, like what you're talking about. So why don't you ask the council if they can determine, you know, what a restaurant is, what a brewery is, an alcohol cocktail lounge, you know, music, other, other places in town all play music every Friday night. There's karaoke, you know, things like that that are running till two AM in central business. So we were just asking.
I, I guess when I read this, my thoughts was, I can't ever remember the second we are coming to get a conditional use permit to do music on the court.
I said that same thing.
That's what, yeah.
And so, and I mean, that's the first thing that came to me. So I thought, first of all, it's very nice that they did, are coming to us to ask permission. And I think that Susan did make some good points. I, you know, especially, I actually didn't know that the, that they have to quit serving it.
You didn't know that?
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't know that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so Megan's first applica, Megan's first letter didn't have some of the stuff that Susan said needed to be addressed. So Megan added more to it. And Susan was in mediation the last two days that, so she has, I mean, I don't know. I'm sure she saw the, the agenda when I sent it out on Thursday and the staff report and everything, but I'm not sure she saw her updated.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, so what, what is this exactly being?
Garrett had his hand up for a story.
Oh, sorry. Um, it, with this permit, would we be able to add, like, give it an approval with, uh, conditions? Or it is just a blanket?
She's not asking for a permit. She's asking, does this fall under permitted uses? Which permitted uses are listed, I'll, I'll get online. Maybe I can share my screen.
So it's not a conditional use permit, so we can't add amendments or anything like that to it? It would just be?
And like what I said.
I'll get up here.
Nobody else has ever asked us.
I agree with that.
This is something like people can bring their own lawn chairs to and kind of set up and get comfy is the idea of it. Nothing like we're gonna set up rows of chairs and bring in Zac Brown or somebody in the Zac Brown bit. I don't know. But we do hope to support like local artists and things like that and bring kind of that fun to Three Forks. I think like there, it's easy to find music in a bar, but I'm not taking my kids into the frontier to go listen to music. But it is fun out in the parking lot with bubbles and games and it's a free event and we're not charging a cover for this. Um, so it really is just to draw people to Three Forks and to brewery, of course.
So these are the things that are listed on your screen here as permitted uses. Uh, um, everything in neighborhood highway, which we'll get to that, ambulance, bakeries, barber shops, beauty shops, bars and cocktail lounges. Um, I'm gonna skip over the stuff like, it doesn't, meetings and lodge halls, I mean, people gathering, obviously. Um, there was restaurants in here, restaurants and cafes. Additional uses, and this is where I think this amusement and recreational activities is what Susan was reading per letter as that, as a condition, as a conditionally, well, one, because it's on a conditional use application, but also because of the amusement recreational activity. In Neighborhood Highway. Permitted uses are bars and cocktail lounges, beverage bottling and distribution, which they do that too. Food and drug stores, hotel, motel, liquor stores, mortuaries, restaurants, cafes, drive-in eating establishments, theaters. I mean, to me, it sounds like the same, kind of, but that's up to you guys, you know? Seems like there's a, there's a lot of variety of permitted uses.
What, also what I like about it are the hours. Um, music, the music is gonna be shut down, baby. It's gonna run from five thirty to eight thirty, right now.
I can still make my bedtime.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, one thing I'd like to read on Susan's report, the last sentence, uh, for report to us is, this is a great start for such events in that the application for one event will give all involved more insight into issues that could arise and be further, uh, mitigation into the future if another event is sought. So.
So that's the question I had. What we're voting on tonight, are we giving Megan permission to do the June one? Are we gonna give her permission to do all summer? And that's the thing, I think you have to make sure what, what we're, well, I want to know what I'm voting on, I guess. I mean, I'm not opposed to either one, but I mean.
Where are we even voting if the second we does it, no questions asked?
I think that she's trying to tell us that, you know, hey, I'm coming forward. Give you my application. If you give me your blessings, that helps.
I think this is also a great discussion as to when you guys see the Central Business District zone, which is the next one the zoning board is working on, be rewritten. Makes more sense and it obviously needs some more clarity or at least some broad strokes of what is and is not allowed, or what is not allowed.
Temporary events, uh, given timelines or something like that, actually in those zoning laws. Okay.
Well, are we saying we're gonna do the first one? Then is she gonna come back and, and?
No. If you say it's allowed, you're saying it's allowed.
Okay, for the, for all summary then.
Forever, for anybody that wanted to, that, that this is allowed in central business. It's not, not just her, it's, nature office wants to do something on their back part or whatever, you know, anybody in central business.
Okay. I'd like to say that, uh, I can't vote, but, uh.
You might have to decide.
I won't, I won't be able to, because, uh, if it's tied, I can't vote because my son's the drummer.
Yeah. I threw the band name in there.
But I also, you know, I, I, I know that we have made the bars in the past, do any kind of permit to have music on rodeo weekend where they're out on the side of the bar. Uh, fact they closed down the streets, whatever. I mean, I think this is a very versatile type form of entertainment. I think it'd be great. If we could just get Sonny Boy to tone it down to where we don't.
That's gonna be up to Megan.
I hear he comes with requests on, um, like the sound and equipment and keeping it pristine. Yeah.
I'm just glad that he's employed so, so he doesn't come to me all the time. Garrett, um, I guess, uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve the application for the conditional zoning permit, not conditional, sorry, application for zoning permit, uh, for Sawdust and Steel Brewing, uh, throwing these live events in the light of the law.
I would like to rephrase that for you, if I may, Garrett.
Oh, please.
Uh, she's coming here to ask permission to do this, which doesn't require a motion. We can give her permission.
I don't think that is right. She is asking if use is defined in a permitted use. She's not asking permission. She's asking you to determine what the zoning regulation says.
Okay. Go, Garrett. Yeah, so I would like to approve this zoning use. That is my motion. The motion is to approve the zoning use as put forward by Sawdust and Steel, live at the lot.
Okay. Then move to second. We'll have the vote.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
If we approve this, um, does that mean anyone else can do a show as long as it's done by eight thirty? Or it, like, is that time kind of like what we're approving? Or do we need to stipulate that?
I don't think you can stipulate it because that's a condition. This is saying permitted use.
They would.
So if we vote this through, and then someone wants to come in and do a concert on a vacant lot till two AM, it's a, is it allowed? Or no, because we have a zoning, uh, noise ordinance?
For the Central Business District?
We actually don't have a noise ordinance. We have, we have an ordinance that says if something is too excessive and bothering everybody else around, that it, it could be considered excessive, but it does, yeah, a nuisance. Thank you. Uh, but it's, it doesn't say noise has to be turned off at ten PM or anything specific like that.
Okay.
And if, and to answer your first question, yes. Anybody else could do the same thing in the Central Business District till two AM or whatever other time that they're open.
Call for the question. Question's been called for. We'll have the vote. George?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
And Reagan?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Keep Sonny Boy employed.
See you guys there, I hope.
We'll be there.
Have a good night.
Take care. Okay, uh, our next item is approval of personnel policy updates, version ten, and Crystal will be on.
So, um, last time we did the update to this, um, was, there were just some like changes for at state law and MMA when I went to institute last year, twenty twenty-four. Um, so we made those changes, but then, sorry, I was moving my minutes where I said this, um. Upon renewal for this year, they asked if there's any policy changes. I said, yeah, because you recommended them last year. And they, you have to upload your policy and then he read it again and I guess found some other things to update. So page, I, I'll just put it on the screen, actually, because, yeah, I didn't print it for you because you're, you're all just gonna throw out the garbage. I'm sorry.
And it was huge.
It, yeah. But it is like thirty-seven pages, but it's not. I'm still sharing the right screen, right?
Yep.
So obviously changing this date here. Update the table of contents, but really the first thing is on page seven. So he's just saying, update the probationary section. It says that if an employee refuses to sign, that they can be further disciplined. Now, during probation, employee has the right to leave or you have a right to let them go. No questions asked either way. They don't have to give you two weeks notice or anything like that. Um, to say that they aren't meeting something during that probationary status and that you're going to discipline them and they don't sign it and they could be fired. You just said, it's in probationary status, you can probably let it go anyways some other way. But to say they're gonna be disciplined further on that, you just remove, recommend removing that, just saying that. It would say instead that the mayor would document the employee refusal to acknowledge whatever, um, needed to be dealt with. And the reason is because an employer does not want to appear to be intentionally creating a termination. And there's all sorts of court cases that go after that. So I just went with his updated part, removing it. They had to sign. Um, the next one is on page eighteen. I should probably make that bigger for you. Other?
Good job.
Eighteen right here. Um, it said, if an employee is conducted, the word should just say evaluation is conducted because that's what we're talking about, evaluations every year. That was just a typo. Page twenty-one is, I believe, just a typo. No. This one he recommended doing it. So updated that you forfeit it. So like, if you, you can only earn two times of what you can earn in a year and keep that banked on vacation. And, and then you have to, you can't just work an employee to death. You have to allow them to take some time off and, and rejuvenate themselves or whatever. And so they can't just lose it. So you need to give them a reasonable time. Maybe they can't take vacation because they're short-staffed. And then they just lost their vacation because they're holding down the fort because there's not enough employees to do the job. It's not like the employer should make sure the employee can take some time off. So he was just recommending to take that out, that they don't lose it, that the city will make a reasonable accommodation to grant the employee additional ninety days to utilize that time before they lost it. If they choose not to take vacation and they have the opportunity to, that's different. But this is just saying, um, to provide them an opportunity in case there isn't one. And then on page twenty-one and twenty-three, let's see, twenty-one and twenty-three, sick and funeral leave right here. It talks, and this is something that you guys are gonna have to, I think, decide. It, it, one, it says immediate family is like parents, siblings, kids. The next one says immediate family is parents, siblings, kids, grandparents as well. And I just think we should be consistent. Just pick one. So you guys tell me what you want to put in there. This one says grandparent, child, or any corresponding step or in-law relationship. So if your husband's parents die, you can still take sick time to go to that funeral. Um, and then in twenty-three, it doesn't mention that at all. So you guys can get to pick that one and I'll fix it. Page twenty-six. That's one six. Recent court pieces, MMIA recommended multiple options for discriminatory actions. Maybe I have page.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. There we go. If a person felt that actions of the mayor were inappropriate, they would have no one to report to other than the mayor, the way it's written. In a recent court case, this situation became a very big liability for the employer. Other options report for reporting discrimination can include HR person, city attorney, other supervisors, et cetera. They didn't recommend, or we had it in the past, where they did a plot, they could report to the city council. Because the city council's in-state statute doesn't have the, the oversight of employees and, and dealing with them. So you just have us act, it could be city manager, if we ever got that big, human resources, city attorney, or other supervisor. And he also, hey, this was another one. It talked about volunteer services that you can turn, we can terminate you as a volunteer. Disemployment, we're not really terminating people for volunteering. And then in, um, this is in the ADA part, um, it should just say employment, not that we're gonna terminate your volunteer services. Handle, we treat volunteers as employees. We cover them for work comp, put into the payroll system. They don't get a paycheck, but they're put in there that way. So. Um, then on the hiring and retention under ADA, and there's just another typo. It should be the word our, O U R, rather than O R. And same thing with on twenty-eight, we talk about martial status instead of marital status. Um, just fixing the typo. This one talks about reporting to the city council. We're saying here, a different supervisor department, head or city attorney. Page twenty-nine, we're talking about the annual requirement of all personnel to do the harassment training. It's not required annually. We used to do that, but it's not required. Um, it is something that they recommend doing every three years. So I just put that we will endeavor to try to get it done every three years because sometimes we can't get it all right together. And it might just have to be broken up. Like maybe you guys are this year, next year it's fire department, whatever, so that we don't all have to meet at the same time. And then page thirty, maybe it's thirty-one. I don't see anything red in here. MMIA recommends someone other than the city council. Oh, that was back there, right there. Age numbers will change once we accept or reject all of these, but basically, they're all recommended by MMIA, except you guys making the decision on the one for what is immediate family, the definition. And that's what's everything in that big checkup.
Any questions, Garrett? Um, oh, no questions, sorry. Counsel?
Any questions to Crystal? Thank you, Crystal, for all the hard work. Garrett, I, I make a motion that we approve the changes to the personnel policy.
Uh, do we still need to make a decision on the, a definition of family or the close family?
Immediate family.
Um, uh, my, my take on that for the immediate family is, uh, that phrase that was used that was, had the most permissive, it had like, uh.
Stepchildren and stuff?
Yeah, just keeping that wording, uh, and using that as our policy. The, allowing you to take, uh, sick days for bereavement is.
So use this one here that says employees may have sick time for personal illness for the court custody, um, for immediate family, which is employee spouse, any member of the employee's household or any parent, child, grandparent or grandchild in corresponding step or in-law relationships. That one?
That's what I want.
The other one, let me, let me find the other one.
Because.
That's broad enough to cover everything.
The other one didn't even have grandparents in there.
The one that's in sick leaves talks about, that one's really good. Let's look at the next one. Funeral leave. So we need to make this match, the funeral leave, because this one says, say, spouse, children, father, mother, brother, sisters, but it doesn't have anyone else living in the household.
Yeah, that's my recommendation.
Does the council agree with Garrett? I do. Garrett, could you make a motion to that effect then?
Uh, yeah, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the city policy, uh, with the amendment of the immediate family, um, using the more permissive language.
Then move the second. George?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
And Reagan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Crystal, for your work on that. Okay, uh, no public for anything. So mayor, council, uh, mayor and council reports, I have a few, uh, here, uh, on, uh, June third, our budget committee will meet and I'd like to bring up to you at this time, uh, I did get a hold of a gentleman from Great Western, his name is Carl Yakowicz. And I had brought up to you, uh, at our last meeting that we were looking into a possible transportation, long-term transportation plan. And Carl, uh, said if we could apply in June or July, there are grants that will be a one-to-four match. So we'll talk it over with the budget committee when we meet on June third. If you want to go for that. Dean, do you have any questions? Okay. And then also, uh, I got back with the highway department and street signs will be installed in the near future. I don't know what they meant by that. It could be another year from now, but I will keep, keep going on that. And, uh, I met with, I didn't meet with him yet, but I will be meeting with this gentleman. His name is Trevor Little. And is, uh, he's state hydrologist and he is interested in finding out what they can do to repair, uh, the culvert that is running under I, I ninety, Madison overpass. And, uh, he's very concerned about it and that's good news. So I'm going to try to meet with him before our next meeting, do your report. Uh, also, I've been in touch with, uh, Jess, Jessica Solo and Levi Howe. They're in charge of our purse for wastewater. And then, uh, probably next week they will be placing, uh, full meters in some of our manholes. Reason for that is just to check for, uh, like at midnight when there's no flow, see if there's any I N I, which is infiltration water coming into the mains. So they're going to be doing that steady and, uh, some more things will be coming up. We're concerned about, uh, what the state's going to do with nutrients such as nitrous, nitrates out of our wastewater plant. Will, will we have to redo any of that? So that I will try to give you a better report on June tenth. And I think that's all I have. With that, uh, is, are there any council announcements? No? Okay. So for our agenda, our agenda items for next council meeting, uh, we're going to have a public hearing, a decision on the second reading of the ordinance adding Southeast zoning district to the zoning code. And a public hearing and decision on the second reading of an ordinance adding the landscaping chapter to the zoning code. And a public hearing and decision on a resolution accepting the amended April twenty, twenty twenty-five service area reports and the impact fee advisory committees recommended impact fees for fire, water, wastewater transportation and municipal.
And we'll have a public hearing and decision on a resolution of intent to increase the minimum sewer and water rates. Basically five dollars each, which is ten percent increase for sewer roughly and fifty percent for water. A public hearing and decision on a resolution of intent to declare certain property as surplus, no longer necessary to conduct city business and authorize its sale or disposal. And we might, it's going to be a marathon. We might have a public hearing decision on the first reading of an ordinance repealing the impact fee ordinance and adopting the new one that was made much easier than a existing one with all the credit system and stuff. So we'll see. It might be a lengthy one, but at least you don't have to read the first two.
The first two were the ones that I read last time. I asked Crystal about it today and she said, because we made the amendments in and voted on amendments. Unless if you want me to read them again, I do. But, uh. I did not. They were fifteen pages each. So anyway, okay, well, that's it. So do I have a motion to adjourn? So move. Second.